Welcome, everybody. Dave, you wanna get us started?
Yeah, so welcome again. This is our 17th get together. As always, the events can be recorded and of course, we hope for people to give feedback on everything. Really, it's about hearing what you guys want to learn and do and hear with the network. And as always, if you're not speaking, yes, people would be on mute. In terms of tech issues, hopefully none, but as always, Zoom is always coming out with updates and those especially seem to affect breakout rooms. So if you have any issues, try that, or if you're able to join selling issues, let us know. And of course, anything you want to know more about, questions or suggestions, feel free to email me. And more people coming in. So last time, we did a lot, actually. Last time, we... Oh, yes. I was gonna say, the last time we heard from Councilman Gennaro, who is talking about combined sewage overflow and big six pollutants and local on 97. And Damian of the Hope Project told us about the actual new project. Some different meetings, we heard about the Million More Trees Project, the Economic Development Committee, possible City Cleanup Corps or other name projects that may or may not materialize. So lots going on. Today, we're going to talk about very different things. We're going to talk about and learn about the New York City Economic Development Corporation's blueprint, which hasn't even longer name, but Sander Dolder of EDC is going to tell us about that. Christine is here, who's going to tell us about KBC's offshore wind program, which has all sorts of interesting things happening and even more interesting things are on the way. And we're going to see and interact with sort of an updated version of the Ku Mu asset map that many of you saw during a previous meeting. And also potentially get to check out a few more things depending on how much time we have. So lots of good things happening today. Do you... And if we go to the next slide. Technology is being fickle. That's fine.
We're having tech issues.
So before we go into everything, we're going to go into some...
I think just toss to me, Dave, since I can see slides, I'll take over. Thanks.
Okay.
Let me try one more time sharing my screen. I don't know where it went, but let me know. Can you see the slides?
No.
No. Not yet. Not yet.
All right. Or is somebody saying no to somebody else? Yeah, I'm split between two screens and whenever I turn the slides on, they just disappear. So bear with me. I did want to review today, just big picture, where we've been with the Green Economy Network and some of the things that we are focused on. And there's some new folks joining us today. And so bigger picture, the JobSource NYC with Lead Partners, Green City Force, the HOPE Program, Non-Traditional Employment for Women, and the members of the four working groups have been leading the development of this Green Economy Network for New York City. And it is a multi-stakeholder approach to building an inclusive green economy. And I know most of you know that. But for new folks, I wanted to just make clear the goals of the vision and the mission and the goals of the network. So our vision that was developed through the process of all of your contributions is a just and sustainable economy in which green quality jobs are accessible to everyone. And Dave, if you're able to pull up the deck and show it, be my guest. That would be great. And the network is, it's in a collab, a collaborative that our mission is a network to collaborate and establish effective practices, align current systems to create green jobs and career paths with priority and access on sustainability, priority on access and sustainability. The three priority goals that over the past year, we developed, we developed 10, but three bubbled up as the top, were to develop formal employer partnerships to increase economic opportunities. Great, thank you. Increase economic opportunities for priority populations, understand industry needs and priorities, align partners by sector and develop end market trainings. That's the first goal. The second is to determine which standardized government investments into green economy careers would help most and advocate for them directly or indirectly. And we've been doing this through the policy proposals that we developed. And to establish replicable, scalable paths for job seekers to understand and enter quality career paths, including short-term to long-term transition through training or retraining for green career paths while sharing employer pathways between network partners. And network partners will collaborate to establish shared hiring referral to target employers, which you'll see some of this work in real time today through the Ku Mu mapping, systems mapping presentation and a jobs board that have come out of our work group.
Um, I just, I think people may already be aware of this, but I just learned in the last few weeks during Earth Month that the New York City Comptroller Brad Lander is, has a whole sustainability division of his team. And he's posted a climate dashboard, which is very user-friendly in terms of understanding the city's targets towards climate solutions and the laws related to that. So I just, I found it to be a very useful reference. And I know that he's also looking to work on some projects related to workforce, which I don't actually have the specifics about right now. But I guess my headline is not surprising, just that it feels like there's a lot of momentum under the current administration focused on sustainability, which of course is a good idea and necessary. But it's just another example of a resource in case people are interested.
Thanks, Tanya. Indeed, always interesting to see what's coming out of that office. In the interest of time, take us right to our next section, which we're going to hear from Sander Dolder, who's Senior Vice President at the New York City Economic Development Corporation. And he's going to talk to us about the blueprint for NYC and some other matters. Sander, if you are here.
Yes, I can share the screen too. And I can't promise, Dave, that I have as soothing of a voice than you do. But you know, I'll try to make it a calming morning like your voice. So hi, everyone. Sander Dolder with EDC. I'll take a second to share my screen. Let's see, I think it's this one. Let's see if it works. Then it should. Let me get in the presentation mode. Should work now. Does everyone see it?
Yeah.
Perfect. So I've been with the EDC for roughly nine years now. So I started in the end of the Bloomberg era, always sort of working in our industry development group. So the presentation today will be really around, I want to keep it sort of casual. I want to give, you know, a little bit of an insider's view into some of the thinking that's happening. You know, as Tony gave a great segue, there's a lot of excitement in the administration now across the board. I think, you know, all of us here at the table have been pushing for these things for a long, long time, sometimes to an empty room. So it's nice to sort of see it materialize after a lot of our efforts across the years. And I'll quickly apologize that I'm sort of in a sunny situation here. So you know, my face is a little bit witness protection-ish. So yeah, let me get to it. So I'll quickly give an overview of EDC and some of what led to the blueprint, then talk a little bit about the blueprint. But I want to focus more around the economic development side around the space that we care about and sort of what's the thinking there and perhaps hint a little bit at what's to come. Although, you know, there's a lot of moving pieces and nothing is finalized quite yet. But give a sense of sort of the momentum that we're dealing with and the opportunities that we're dealing with. So and after that, you know, I'll try to leave some room for some Q and A as well. So EDC historically has done three, really three pieces. We manage a lot of the city's real estate and with the purpose of really of reutilizing it. So a lot of it ends up being waterfront properties and old industrial sites, where we historically, over the last couple of decades, tried to repurpose it for economic development reasons, right? And one of the things I would say, having been at EDC for so long, which by the way, is quite rare, because the saying is you work private sector hours with the bureaucracy of the public sector and the pay of a nonprofit. So you know, it has a little bit of the challenges that a lot of us seem to probably face. But one of the things is, it's really that I've seen over the last almost decade is reactivating the waterfront and really the advantages that that could, that can bring. And now sort of, and we'll see later in the presentation, some of the opportunities tied to our sector here that really can, will be instrumental to the growth of the green economy here. So we manage repurposed real estate. We also do a lot of like financing around development work and deal with some of the thorny issues that city agencies have, sometimes want to pass along to us. So things like rezonings and things like that, that have some controversy, we are sometimes involved with that. But then my group is sort of on, all the way on the right here, where we really think about industries in New York and where do we want the economy to be two to five years from now? And how do we get there? And so a lot of the work involves around and our group was created after 2008. It was created around 2010 during the financial crisis here, with really the idea of diversifying the economy. So we spent really the first decade building the tech sector and, you know, supporting fashion and some of the legacy industries here and also manufacturing and things like that. And then recently, I would say, in the last five years or so, a lot of the work has been around building the life sciences sector here. And then more recently, really, we've been thinking about the green economy broadly and around investing in a lot of the spaces there with the idea of can we, as a government, play a stimulating role in growing these industries here? And that is, it's pretty comprehensive. It's very macro, big picture. But I'll try to ground it in a couple of examples moving forward. So quickly, before we get into sort of the economic blueprint, I think it's worth mentioning what our thinking was during the pandemic and sort of how that influenced where we're at right now and sort of the opportunities that are at hand. So I'm, and I'm going to move pretty quickly through this, but we can certainly happy to answer questions after. All that to say, there was a big change with the pandemic in terms of reassessing where we're at as New York City and where we need to go. Especially, I guess, one blind spot where we haven't spent as much time on, but we should and we will going forward is around supporting small businesses, mom and pop shops, a lot of the glue that makes New York City neighborhoods and the economy thrive here. And I think there's a lot of pride around it. And that's one area that was really affected from the pandemic and continues to be. And so that's one area where we are going to spend a little bit more time focusing on. I'll probably touch a little bit less on that today, but certainly, again, offline, happy to chat about that. Part of it is certainly that behavior has changed, right? A lot of e-commerce has thrived during the pandemic. You have a lot of online groceries and deliveries. Commuting has changed. There's an increase in drivers and less reliance on public transportation, unfortunately. And those trends could be temporary, but some of them are going to be, are going to cement themselves. And, and you know, and things where I think there's a lot of discussion and the dust hasn't quite settled on is around remote work and sort of how that is going to change the fabric of New York City, especially when you're looking at Midtown Manhattan or Downtown Manhattan, where historically very much business districts that are overly extended on perhaps on office space. And what does that mean for the future going forward in a world that has some flexibility in the work arrangements? That remote work is more prevalent. So that kind of feeds into sort of the thinking going into the present. These quickly is just, we did an exercise during, early during the pandemic on behavior change and thinking about how people are, how the behaviors are going to change and how that can influence the economy. And so rising inequality is a big one, rethinking space is a big one. Thinking about regional models of economic development, right? Because supply chains have changed quite a bit, our reliance, because geopolitical concerns, because of pandemic, the idea of onshore and the idea of bringing manufacturing back to the United States or, you know, in North America and really think regionally, how do you build supply chains from manufacturing to recycling? Are things we're strongly thinking about? And it's something that is, is more center than it used to be. And then, you know, there's other things like lifelong learning and how innovation is moving faster and faster. And how do you adapt the economy and the workforce for that? One thing I think New York City does very well compared to a lot of other cities, at least in North America, is that we are very collaborative comparatively. I like, you know, one of the reasons why, you know, I strongly believe in New York and I've been invested in this space for so long is the government works with the private sector that works with nonprofits that we work with, academic institutions, we look at it as a system and a complex system, but a system nonetheless. And each of us play a role. None of us are overly extended in terms of power. You go to the Bay Area, the private sector has an overextended amount of power. You go to Boston, the academic institutions have a stronghold on the shape of the economy. Here, it's very much across the board. And I think that that's a powerful message and that's one of our strengths. It makes it harder to do things sometimes, but I feel, we certainly feel that that's something that we want to really double down on. And we see sort of, if you look at progressive places like Amsterdam or the Nordic countries, they are very much similar to how we kind of view it in a very much ecosystem way. One of the things that came true in the pandemic is that really we need to build better infrastructure around digital connectivity. And that's one area that the city wants to invest in, has been investing in, and is an important, fundamentally is an important piece that everything that we want to do going forward kind of depends on that. Even with the green economy, if you don't have proper broadband, if you don't have proper connectivity, we won't be able to achieve the type of goals that we want to with decarbonization. And so there's, there's a lot there that's at play. And I think it's important for the city to play a role in that. This I'll touch briefly on. It's just the idea that we need to design more for flexibility. I think New York City is a very complex place. It has a lot of different communities with a lot of different needs. And it's important for us to capture that in a way that we build solutions that address as many needs as possible. And that's a very difficult thing to do. You're not always successful on that end, but it's important to kind of have that goal in mind. Just like you want to be carbon neutral and net zero. It's something you have to strive for and push constantly on. So that's the way that we're kind of thinking when we're designing programs. That we want to involve the community more. We want to engage more in the program design side of things and not just after we already created a program. I can skip that. I think this, this is just to illustrate that I feel in New York, there's quite, there's been quite some progressive policies when it comes to dealing with climate change from a legislation perspective. And that has a lot of influence on how we can create markets here and economic opportunities. And I'll touch on the last one quickly around offshore wind, but that's the perfect example. The state has some ambitious, the city have ambitious goals for carbon reduction. They recognize that renewable energy is key to that. While offshore wind is, they push some investments to really push for offshore winds. Can EDC play a role in building a sector around that? And so some of our investments last year were really to do that. And I'll touch a little bit on this, but this kind of foreshadows sort of the opportunity at hand. Because as we all know here, offshore wind is just a sliver of the potential opportunity that we're, when we talk about the green economy. And so the way we're approaching here with offshore wind is really thinking, can we use our assets for infrastructure, for staging, for assembly, for manufacturing? And we're doing some of that in Sunset Park. Some of our investments are going towards workforce development. Really thinking workforce development at a granular level in Sunset Park, but also in a larger context, working with academic institutions, working with workforce development organizations on thinking about programming in this space. It's a brand new industry in North America. How'd you build this from scratch? How'd you build it that you're not just importing talent? Like we, we unfortunately did with, when we build out the tech sector here. Oftentimes, when we look back, we could have been, we should have put more thought into how you build it inclusively and really build a talent pipeline in New York. So New Yorkers get access to these jobs. How do you build these pipelines? And it's a really complex thing. There's unions that are involved. There's, there's a lot of parties that are involved, but essentially, how do we build that workforce? And so over the coming years, that's what we're looking to do. From an innovation side, it's a similar sort of thing. You look at Nordic countries. A lot of them already have a lot of degrees at their academic institutions to build, to train young people around some of these jobs, whether engineering, whether assembly, whether cybersecurity. Those are things we need to do as well. We also need to invest in research, right? And then thinking about how do we build the ideas, the innovative ideas in offshore wind 10 years from now, five years from now? And we want these solutions to come out of New York. Because if we built the industry successfully here, it becomes an export business as well. Perhaps New York businesses can help build the offshore wind industry in the Southeast or in Texas. And that's something we're really interested in as well, and we see the long-term potential of it. And that's really where New York City companies could thrive. And so how do you build a platform that way? How do you build a more inclusive R and D model? Where it can be maybe employee-owned companies? And how can we, we really push some of the agenda forward when it comes to building companies in a little bit of a different way, in a way that employees have a little bit more control over its destiny? And so where, that's an angle we want to take. There's of course, always a lot of barriers with these things and you just kind of have to like push, try to push it through. So that gets to sort of the economic blueprint. So everything I explained before was up until, let's just say, December. And then the new administration came in, a bunch of new people come in. EDC, for context, it tends to be the president and some of the president's office that rotates. But generally, most of the people underneath that stay the same. We're very apolitical. As much as we can be, we're sort of like a cousin to the city, if you will. And for better or for worse, right? We're connected, but we're not too connected. And part of the blueprint is really to give a framework as to where we're going to go with this administration economically. And some of the things I talked about are part of it, right? Thinking about how we build an economy organically here. How do we grow sectors here, including New Yorkers in that process? How do we invest in some of these industries that will be the future, right? And how do we design it in a way that reflects 21st century priorities? I think one of the mistakes when you look at a lot of economic blueprints is they propose things that are future-looking sectors, but they want to implement it in a way that's reflected in 20th century structures. And we're a different world now. New York City is a reflection of the population of New York City is a reflection of the future of the United States. And if we're gonna be pro-democracy, which New York City certainly is, we can set the example. We have big city that has a big budget. A lot of eyes are on us. We have influence globally. We have a role in setting the standard. We have a role in setting expectations, for better or for worse, on how we think about the economy and how we want to grow it. Because it has implications, and we work a lot with our friends across the world. It has implications on London and Berlin and Seoul and Tokyo and in Latin America increasingly. And it's important for us to sort of like put some of those ideals in place. But again, you know, remain sort of neutral a little bit politically, because that is, there's, it's sort of a game you have to play, unfortunately. And so to dive into the green economy, because this is sort of really where I think all of us are really interested. This is sort of an insider's view in terms of our process last year to get up until the present. So we looked at, we did an exercise, an internal exercise to look at all the potential subsectors of the green economy that New York City could be competitive in. This is a subset of it. We kind of organized in a way of think about how do you address climate change? So what's on the left is how, if really, when you think about climate change, you have to think about decarbonization. You have to think about the supply chains and really holding the supply chains accountable. And then of course, this adaptation side where some things are out of our control. We need to protect ourselves. How do we do that? All of those things have potential market opportunities. And there's plenty of groups and the city government that focus on reducing emissions and set policies and have far more expertise on granular ways to do that from a policy perspective and from a science perspective. We are very much, EDC is very much focused on the industry development side of it. So we work across agencies and I'll get to that in a second. All that to say, you know, this is sort of the list where, in the middle, where we kind of narrowed it down. And we're going to narrow it down further going forward. And we already have, you know, buildings is something, given that 60% of emissions in New York are from buildings, that's an area that is prime for a market opportunity here. And it's also an area where unfortunately, if you look at venture capital funding in the green economy, it's one of the areas that gets the least amount of funding. Partially because it's probably harder to understand, it's probably not as sexy as say, investing in an electric vehicle. So can we, as a government, play a role in filling that gap? And so we look at things like that. We also look at what are our tools? I mentioned with offshore winds, you know, we own infrastructure. Can we use our assets to sort of drive some of this? Can we use our experience with some of our funding to drive workforce development? Uh, can we use our experience with some of our funding to drive workforce development? You know, we get things like Cornell Tech, which is more on the sort of the research end, but really thinking about more working with local organization, workforce organizations to build a pipeline um across the board. And so that's where we feel like there's a lot of potential and EDC plays a role in that. And then, of course, I'm where our bread and butter is sort of the R and D side, which is something we're gonna continue to sort of invest in. The the one thing there to to really mention is there's a big opportunity to bring a lot of federal research resources here. And that's something that we've we've worked on. We work with our friends over at Brookhaven National Lab in thinking about what those opportunities could be. There's a generational change when it comes to a lot of those research institutions where over the next 10, 20 years, and this is also true in a lot of city agencies. A lot of the expertise over the next 10, 20 years are retiring. Uh, and those roles need to be filled. And can we create gap, can we fill that gap? Can we create opportunities to fill those gaps? And so we're very interested in that, and I think there's a big opportunity there to sort of think about. It it would be amazing to get uh a more represent, a more diverse coalition in those research institutions. Uh, and how do we build that? And in New York is a perfect place to do it. And so that's something that gets me really excited. Um, and and I think there's a real opportunity there. And 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 so really what the process is from here on out is is looking at these sectors and thinking about where can we play a role? What else is going on in the city? What are nonprofits doing? What are academic institutions doing? What are other city agencies doing? And so in the blueprint, we kind of highlighted that we're forming an inter-agency group. Um, one of the main things is you have to identify champions across city agencies that can help drive this change. Uh, so we are doing that. We're also gonna build in a way to capture um the private sector and nonprofits and the outside world into the process. And again, that's sort of thinking about how do we design initiatives with everyone at the table? Um, and not after we already designed programs and, you know, in a back room somewhere in an office close to City Hall that we engage the outside world. And so I think it's very important to keep the engagement going, but also recognize that uh, there's a window of time, there's a rare window of time where there's alignment with the city, the state, and at the federal level. And so we need to seize the opportunity. So there's some compromises here and there that we'll have to make. But really, the idea is we need to move fast, uh but we want to make sure we do it where we capture the needs and then uh uh from, you know, the outside world and also across the city agencies. And we don't do this in a vacuum. And just to kind of capture the the amount of opportunity and really where I I guess the city government can play a role in this is if you just look at pure real estate. The and and you know, this this slide, I think we had it more for European audience, so hence the square meters, but um, there's 450 million square feet of real estate that the city manages and owns. Can we use that as a vehicle to drive the market? Um, and DECATs released a plan late last year around, uh, I think it was a $4 billion plan to decarbonize their assets. And that is gonna start getting actualized starting this year and and really kind of aggressively happening because of local law 97, because of regulations that are coming online. There, there's a sense of urgency to to decarbonize our assets. So we see that as a market driver. We can make a big difference in in driving building efficiency solution, driving new materials and investing in in areas that um previously we haven't and and we really feel that can play a big role in driving the market. Uh, and so that's just an example of the huge amount of of um market opportunity that the city can help drive. And 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 that's where we're, you know, our pitch is sort of that internally, and that's been gaining a lot of traction. Um, and then, you know, I guess one other way to kind of look at it is there's these big opportunities that are, there's shiny objects that are clear that we need to do it. But then there's other things that are probably a little bit more technocratic, a little bit more cerebral and less uh mainstream, I guess. And things for for years, if you said circular economy internally, you got, you got a lot of eye rolls. Um, because you'll be, people will be super passionate about circular economy and um, you know, the general audience was just like, you know, that they're doing their thing. Um, but this is beyond what we want to do. But now there's more and more of a recognition that there's supply chain issues that 20% plus of the waste of our waste stream is construction materials. Are there ways around that? These are big problems that need to be addressed. The pandemic clearly had an issue with some of the cleanliness of the city. Are there opportunities there to sort of change and move the dial on those things? And with that brings a lot of market opportunities as well. There's a lot of innovation happening in recycling and using, say, use glass to make recycled concrete. And could we build that supply chain in New York where you bring recycled concrete into new construction? Can we help drive policies that our investments as EDC uh into new developments require a certain amount of sustainable recycled materials? And and can we move the dial there? It's gonna have to be a compromise because there's a lot of forces at play, but you know, that from my team's perspective, these are a lot of the things that we're trying to push and we're trying to actualize. Um, and so eh those are sort of two examples. And then just kind of to close it out, um this is a picture that I think represents the momentum. Uh, uh, last Friday, we 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 took one of our ferry boats, which the ferry system EDC manages. And we brought, there was a big international offshore wind conference down in Atlantic City. I was unfortunately not part of it, but a lot of my colleagues went down there. Uh, it sounds like they had a great time. They made a lot of connections. There's a lot of buzz. What you see happening now, this boat was filled with a lot of we we went, we took rented a boat to tour potential sites for offshore wind. We are already putting investments in Sunset Park, but there's a lot of sites in Staten Island that could be used for manufacturing, for staging, for a lot of different offshore wind uh roles. And so we took a boat, it's a beautiful day, we toured it around. You had a lot of prospective developers from uh the Nordic countries that are looking at those properties and um really thinking about, you know, and there were local organizations, we had a good representation, and I can certainly share if there's interest, sort of what that composition was. Um, but very much, you know, hyping it up, right? And and showing the potential here and trying to like visualize and actualize like what this will look like. And it's just such a great momentum right now to to seize the moment and um, that's what we want to capture, you know, we, it's it's a lot of work ahead. We're gonna I'm gonna be extremely burned out by the time the fall comes. But I also know that this is our window, right? And I'm not, I'm take, I'm not taking it for granted. I know, like, I've been waiting for trying to get something through like this from the city for so long that I know that we have the momentum and and that's sort of where, you know, networks like this one are a great way to really like galvanize and capture sort of the needs that we need to 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 codify and how we do things forward, especially from an economic development perspective. So I'll pause there. I just threw a lot of information. I apologize if I was rambling, but I'm 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 excited. Um, and you know, and I think, and I think we have a real momentum. So I I'm I'm, yeah. When these things happen, I know that that's sort of when um when it it feels very similar to how the tech sector felt over a decade ago here, where there's a lot of buzz. It's gonna happen. We just got to make sure it happens in the right way. And um, that's sort of where, you know, I think it's particularly important to engage this group in the conversation over the coming months, because that's sort of where particularly early in administration, that's where a lot of those decisions are made. So thank you. Um, and yeah, I'm happy to answer any question.
Thank you, Sander. And yes, let's open up for some Q and A. And if you want to put questions in chat, great. If you want to unmute yourself and ask your question, also great.
There are questions in chat.
Oh, I also, oh, I I am not seeing the chat because I'm driving, but can I ask a question?
Please do.
Oh, great. Sander, thank you so much. Um, I am, I've been in workforce development in New York City for over two decades. And this is the first time EDC has been demystified for me. I always, I always knew it existed. I never knew the slogan about uh private sector hours, public sector bureaucracy and nonprofit wages. Appreciate that though. Um, but I really, I have a better understanding of EDC than I ever have before. So thank you for that. Um, at one point in the presentation, you were talking about specifically the offshore wind and Sunset Park. But you kept talking about uh workforce development investments and working for working with workforce development programs. And so um, because I've never really understood EDC, uh, the organizations that I've worked with um have have never um like been close partners with EDC. And I don't know what that means or looks like even. Are there like funding mechanisms that EDC has, or is it partnering to go in on proposals? Like, how does the, like, kind of less theoretical and more tactical, practical parts of EDC work?
Totally. Yeah, yeah, totally. Uh, and I guess I I appreciate, I glad you brought that up because I didn't talk about that. Everything we tend to do is public-private partnerships. I mean, we partner with, when I say private, it's NGOs. It can be startups. It could be large corporates. It could be academic institutions. So everything we do tends to be that way. Um, there's, obviously, we have procurement guidelines. We have to be very sort of transparent about our process and rightfully so. So the way it looks like, say, let's take the offshore wind plan. We released the plan last year, right? There's a couple of things to keep in mind. There's some things there where, for instance, we um we signed a deal with Equinor, one of the big um well offshore wind developers with some of our real estate in Sunset Park. Through that contract, there is funding mechanisms that are in place for uh innovation and for workforce development. In those instances, what we did was we built, we have committees that are built around those two areas that engage, say, like uprose or organizations like that in uh the community and to making these decisions. So when I was mentioning program design and how we want to engage communities, that's one way where there's a panel that decides and advisory board that decides on where things get invested. So that's one way of doing it. And that's sort of new, I think, uh, in terms of like, we really want to position it as, again, collective decision-making and program design in a way that's more inclusive. And and those are ways that we're trying to get towards there, right? I think part of our job is to experiment a little bit and try different things and see what works. Uh, government is notoriously risk averse. We play a role where we can be a little bit less risk averse. So that's one way to do it. More traditionally, and this is more part of that $200 million plan, is the strategy that we set in place uh in September that kind of gives um broader strokes in terms of the things we're looking to do. The process that follows is we start sort of like the project scoping. You know, we start doing a lot of um discussions across the board in terms of what we need to do and how we need to do it. And then oftentimes, there's a procurement mechanism, whether it's an RFP or an RVI or a request for information, which is even less committal. Uh, there's different ways of that to really kind of get proposals, ideas, input from the outside into how we're gonna frame these programs. And once that happens, you know, we 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 contract with those organizations and we built a program together uh and really in a collaborative way. Um, so that's usually our more traditional mechanism, and that's how some of the funding that we have, that 191 million, how that's that's gonna flow out, right? A a chunk of that is on for workforce development program. A chunk of that is for innovation work, and a chunk of that funding is to retro, to sort of upgrade our port facilities for uh, you know, the type of installations that we're looking to do.
Thank you. I put something in the chat on the manufacturing and really, I think, it's so good to hear you talking about the potential of manufacturing. AEA is in the Bronx and we're really have opportunities to do an awful lot of electrification, but all the products we get from the Far East. And it's got to be that somehow that's, we've got American and New York City manufacturing. Is there any progress on that issue?
Yeah, I I I love that question because it's it's a hard one, but it's an important one. Uh, you know, I I basically talked about a little bit about onshoring. I think as with like the pandemic and also the geopolitical tensions sort of accelerated a trend that we started to see with um global competition, right? Um, there are certain areas, first of all, I I would say fundamentally, we need to think of our economy more at the regional level than just the five boroughs. When I started in Bloomberg era, it was basically New York City economy with the five boroughs and their cliffs. They didn't want us to talk to regional groups. This is where it was at. It's all where our investments should go. And from EDC perspective, that's true. We, you know, we are a New York City organization. Our investment should go to New York City. But the solutions of how you develop uh the economy should be regional. So to sort of exemplify that, we are thinking, you know, where are the market opportunities in manufacturing, particularly in this space? Um, where I, and and we're investigating now and we're working on that. Where I think it's gonna go, my 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 hypothesis is New York City is gonna be the region itself can be an area where we can manufacture specialized products and precise products because of the high cost of living, because of the high cost of manufacturing. You're not gonna be really competitive with commodities. But when it comes to products like new materials, when it comes to products like special devices, um, voice technologies is an example here where they do a lot of specialized things. There's a real future, you know, comparatively, I grew up in Switzerland. So an area, a country that's very expensive to do things, but they have a strong manufacturing base. And part, and and this is similar with, say, Germany. And part of the reason why is that they are, um, there's a culture around. Uh, and you see that in Japan, too. These countries that have very much uh, when they're highly specialized products, they thrive there. You know, these countries, uh, these companies last hundreds of years because they're they're so specialized in 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 doing something well, and they're the best at it um, that they can manufacture things there. They, and and so I see that this brings an opportunity to do it, right? The green economy and the solutions here are new to the United States, or it's like uh reimagining old ideas with new solutions that address sustainability. Can we use this moment to do exactly that, to identify the right kind of things to to manufacture in the New York City area and build the supply chains here, working with upstate? Working with here, you know, I think upstate, you could use it as a way to mass produce things. In New York City, you produce, you know, the specialized products, more um, you know, less amount, more specialized products uh and have the R and D here and have um deimplementation partners here. So you need electricians that understand this and engineers, et cetera, et cetera. And I feel like there's a big opportunity, whether it is around buildings, whether it is around act tech, whether it is around uh mobility and renewable energy. Um, a lot of those concepts are the same across the board. And so, yeah, that that's certainly something we're looking at. But you need to know what can be done here versus uh upstate, for instance.
I think in the interest of time, we're gonna take other questions in chat, email, and of And of course, Tim is going to be at future meetings, so Sander can share some more information another time. But please, while everything is fresh in your mind, write down any questions that you have, send to me, send to Sander. I always like to presume that any question that someone has, probably a bunch of other people have the same question or once it's asked, they're like, oh yeah, I would also like to know about that. So Sander, again, thank you so much for this presentation. Been super helpful. One question that, super quick question that a lot of you have been asking me, can we get a copy of the, the presentation to share out with everyone?
Yes, yeah, I can share it. I would just ask that you keep it within this group and not share it too much externally. Just, that would be my only ask.
Good. Won't be in the daily news.
I just want to point to one question in chat that maybe when you get off, you could answer in chat. And you probably won't be able to answer it all right now, but across the seven sectors and within the sub-industries, do you have a sense of where we will have the most immediate job growth, estimated numbers, what types of jobs? But there's a bunch of questions in chat for you if you could take a little time to look at it. Thank you.
I, I see that Gaspar definitely has one question that he wants to ask. Gaspar, is it a quick question?
I don't know. Also a comment. And also I saw, I saw that Jen had a question about the, if the Sunset Park partnership opportunity is still open. So maybe it's more important to go there.
Indeed. If, if someone has a super quick question that Sander can give a super quick answer for, great. I just know we, we're a little behind on schedule. But yes, if anyone has a burning question that's key for the group and is fast.
That is not.
Okay, then going to go right to our next section, super briefly, and we were going to do this at the end. But want to give a little quick update about June. So ScoresView responded to the in-person survey that we sent out and got lots of great information. Two key thing, two key takeaways from that is that plenty of people, COVID totally aside, want in-person to be a sometimes thing, just with difficulty with travel and everything else. I don't think there's anyone who said they wanted to do always remote or always in-person for forever. The other key takeaway was that there are still plenty of people who are a little iffy about having in-person, no vaccine or mask requirement events, which is totally understandable. So in light of all this, for next month, for our big network gathering, we're going to, for the first time ever, meet in person, see how this goes. And this is going to actually be hosted by Solar One. And Sarah, who's here, is going to give us a few quick updates about this. And all of the details are going to be in email. So if you miss anything, do not worry.
Hey, everyone. So I probably have mentioned this to some of you before, but we have a brand new off administrative office, but also workforce training center in Long Island City, Queens. So can everybody see the pictures right now? Yes. So this is just a picture of our office. So we are going to be hosting the in-person meeting on June 2nd. We are going to be requiring vaccination. I don't know how we're going to deal with that process yet, but more details to come. And hopefully, weather permitting, we will be actually hosting most of the event outdoors in our private roof deck. So we're really excited to show off the space and our new workforce training center, which is in the downstairs of the building that we can also give a quick tour of. And we'll have coffee and snacks and things, I believe. So it should be really nice to network with you all in person. And I hope that you guys can make it. Just for address, we'll send that out, but it's right off of Vernon Boulevard in Long Island City.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. And as Sarah mentioned, we're going to send out all the details, extra information. In the interest of time, going to go straight to our next presenter. Christine is going to tell us about some of the work that Kingsborough Community College is doing on SWIN initiatives. I'll skip all the super presentation, but Christine's been doing lots of great work in her different groups. So it's good to hear from her today.
Thanks. Let me see if I can share screen. Does everybody see that? Yes. Nodding of heads. Do you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, everyone. Christine's Gary Laporta. I'm the Assistant Dean for Workforce Development and Continuing Education at Kingsborough Community College. As you see on the slide, I'm going to try to go through this a little quickly. I'm from Brooklyn. So if I speak too fast, I'm sorry, but hopefully you're all New Yorkers, so you understand me. So here at Kingsborough, we have a very diverse population. We service many communities from all over Brooklyn, Queens, Staten Island, even some from Manhattan and Bronx. We really try to have a robust catalog of offerings for workforce training. So whenever there's a new industry or sector, we get curriculum developers and subject matter experts to come in and provide us the curriculum. And we have various directors of training programs, like many of partners here on the call, the same as you do. But obviously with the offshore wind, we realize that this is going to be a particular population that we're looking to serve. We see that this is particularly a population of career changers, people who can transfer their skills potentially from another sector. And a big push obviously is for the traditionally marginalized populations. I know that working with Equinor and a few other employer partners, that's huge and that's big on their list. They have certain percentages in which they do need to get those underserved populations into the pathways for offshore wind. So what we are specifically looking at is the maritime sector of offshore wind because we have a very robust and successful maritime technology associate degree program. And we've done some non-credit workforce trainings with Decan a few years ago for the New York City ferry system, and that was very successful. And a lot of those students ended up persisting, getting jobs in the New York City ferry system, as well as continuing into the degree program, going on for their degree, which is great. Those are the kind of pathways that we look to create. So it's not only about employment placement, but it's about students persisting in seeking higher education and getting degrees and then going from entry-level wage to career living wages, right? So that's what we're hoping to do with offshore wind. And we've been working on this now for like over three years. And I'm proud to say that we recently received a few grant awards to now create an offshore wind training center here on campus. It will take a bit because it's city and state funding and, you know, we have to go through some of the red tape and then it's contracting and OMB, it's all that stuff. So I'm hoping that by the time the actual turbines are up, we will have our center here on campus. But to start, as you can see, we have, I have some data I put about who our diverse student body is. So serving a diverse student body means being sure that we can get them through our programs and the process as easy and efficiently as possible. And so this took a few years of formulating that way of doing so. One, it's, it's having my team be prepared and knowledgeable on all the areas within the industry. So this way that we can best inform those coming to the programs. And that usually starts with us hosting an information session. I'm sure many of you are familiar or probably do the same. And that's where we discuss eligibility requirements, the timeline and the schedule, any costs associated to it. We usually tape test for ninth and for offshore wind, we definitely will keep that tape testing to a ninth grade level. We set realistic expectations. Will, will you have to be able to lift 50 pounds? Will you have to wear heavy equipment? What are the weather and the terrain be like for the job? And we discuss potential barriers and how we can assist them with those, whether it's daycare, transportation, food insecurity. All the things that we know that these populations typically have barriers that does not let them persist in programs. Particularly for offshore wind, all participants will eventually have to get something called their TWIC card. This is particular to maritime because anyone working on a vessel needs to have this US Coast Guard approved TWIC card. In order to get the TWIC card, you have to get drug tested, background checks, and there are physical requirements. So during the info session is where we lay all this out because we want to prepare the participants for what is to be expected of them. We do actually obviously lose some people along the way because they realize that some of these things are just not what they're looking to sign up for. I especially think with offshore wind, how we're, what the information we're gathering is that some of these people might have to be on the vessels two weeks at a time. And, and so to set these expectations and give this information out ahead of time, we feel is probably best. So this way we can, you know, get the participants that are really ready to go and, and understand this industry. Once we go past the information session, I'm happy to say that we were recently funded for something called the Bridge to Offshore Wind. Kingsborough Community College, the Guardian Community College and New York City Technical College received funding to design curriculum to provide to New York City residents either a short two-hour kind of seminar program or a week long that will expose everyone to an introduction to what offshore wind is. And this isn't just going to be about maritime. It's going to be about an introduction to offshore wind industry. We're going to discuss the stages of offshore wind, when the jobs are going to be happening, what are the job titles? What are the, the skills associated? We're going to incorporate a career skills assessment, which is something that we do here at Kingsborough so that a person can better get a sense for what opportunities would be best for them based on, do I like to sit in a computer all day? Am I great with numbers? Do I like to work with my hands? Something simple baseline. And then it would be, what would be your next steps into starting into a career for offshore wind? So that was funded from CUNY Central. We are writing, we are working with a consulting firm right now to design it. And I'm hoping that we get to launch it by fall. That's the idea. So then the person does this, they do the info session. Yes, I want to do this. We get them into the bridge to offshore wind and now they decide, yes, I want to do maritime. This is where my passion lies. So these are the programs, certificate training programs that either we have currently or we plan to have within the next year or so with some of that funding I mentioned. The first is the GWO basic safety training. For any of you who are familiar with offshore wind, you understand that the Global Wind Organization is the requirement needed for those who are going to work in the offshore wind world. It's about basic safety training. For us, it has sea survival, which we currently have in US Coast Guard approved here on campus. The newest thing is that I'm excited about is we got the funding to get the structure for working at heights. Obviously, anyone working with offshore wind, you need to learn how to work at heights and do it safely. We have the funds and I have a company and hopefully I'll have a tower soon up on this campus, fingers crossed, within the next year or so. So yeah, so the GWO training is essential for anyone working with offshore wind and we're hoping to have it, the training here at Kingsborough. The other is the Decan training. I quickly mentioned that. A few years ago, we had grant funds and we hosted a Decan training. It's about 90 hours. Those are those people that work on the, the different vessels that basically do the mooring and the docking of the ships, getting people on and off, general vessel maintenance and, and mechanics work. We currently offer that training and with actual, so I know that Sander mentioned it, but we actually just received funding from EDC to host these trainings here on campus. Again, we're looking to launch that one, the Decan training, hopefully in the fall, but definitely spring of 2023. And then the next one is the crew transfer vessel training. So the crew transfer, transfers are going to be the people that are actually bringing the folks to the wind turbines for maintenance. Again, these jobs are not happening anytime soon, but if we prepare people now in Decan training, they get the, the skills, the certifications, get on-the-job training with the ferry system. The next step up for them would be to get a crew transport, transfer vessel training. We're going to purchase a simulator with those, that funding I mentioned. And it'll be a 36-hour training that will provide them with the necessary skills needing to run an actual crude transfer vessel for offshore wind. You see some of the, this is the data we pulled from labor for Burning Glass, but I'm assuming this might change based on the demand of the workforce in the upcoming years. I showed to some of our employer partners who we currently work with, Hornblower, American Cruise Line, Staten Island Ferry, a lot of our students end up getting jobs at, with these employer partners. And then something that we always do is we try to, as I said, create a path line not only to the jobs, but also to higher education. So here at Kingsborough, we have the AAS in maritime technology. We also have in global environmental studies. We also have an apprentice program, the Maritime Tech Apprentice Program. It's a pre-apprentice and apprentice for those seeking maritime tech skills free. They basically get an associate degree and become a journeyman at the end of it. And lastly, we have other occupational training programs, which include the American Welding Society. Because obviously welders will also be needed within the offshore wind sector. So basically, this is our pathways map. We try to create these for all of our different workforce training programs to really help guide a person who has no idea what a certain industry or a job title and where it can lead them and how much money they can make and what's needed of them. We have these types of career pathway maps for our programs in UX design and culinary arts, community health worker. Obviously, this is not made public yet because it's not certified, you know, it's not, nothing is cement in stone. As I said, we just received funding from EDC for these training programs from CUNY Central, from city and state to build the actual towers and sites for all this. So a lot of this is in the work, but because we know that we want to serve those traditionally marginalized populations, that's where the, the bridge comes in, is that we figured start here. Let's get the information out there. Let's start educating high school students, career changers, the union, you know, trade folks with what offshore wind is, what are the pathways, what are the pipelines? What skills are needed? What credentialing is needed now? So this way, in two years, when the jobs do come, people are, are prepared. I know I spoke very fast, but those are my two slides. I hope that was good information. And if you have any questions, I'll put my, my email in the chat.
Then you, Christine, we'll take a little bit of time for Q and A.
Christine, can you say anything about the number of jobs for offshore wind? It's been a while since I've looked at that. And then also, I've been, you know, I've been thinking about this project a lot and talked a little bit with EDC about it in the past. And I mentioned to them the need and likelihood that Nassau County, Westchester County, and even Eastern New Jersey will probably be playing a role in that project because it's running 20 miles south of Nassau, Queens, Kings, and also down onto the Jersey Shore. So, you know, thinking about number of jobs and then realistically how many New York City will actually be able to capture. We have a highly untrained population for these jobs and that's why it's so important that you guys are doing this, this work. But I think it is important to keep, you know, to have some amount of skepticism that we're, we're really going to capture a lot of this. Plus, the wages really aren't sufficient to sustain life in New York City. I would see people who get these jobs moving to, to the suburbs upon getting them so that they could actually afford a home.
So I think that the numbers vary depending on where you look. I, I'll drop into the chat something. Nicerda has a, like a two-pager on that. According to them, it's that there'll be, provide more than 10,000 high-quality and well-paying jobs in manufacturing, construction, installation, research and development, operations and maintenance and other fields. And that's just for offshore wind, the offshore wind sector. When you speak to Equinor, you know, they say that about 20% of their employment needs will go to the traditionally marginalized populations. I've tried to get like, okay, what 20% of what? Are we talking 100? Are we talking 5,000? They, they have some numbers, but I, I can't tell you what it is off the top of my head. I've seen varying reports, you know, we're also part of the New York Community College Energy Equity Consortium, which is 24 SUNY and CUNY schools and anywhere from New York City up to upstate New York. And our goal is to create 2,000 new workers to provide upskilling and training to, for the, you know, what, what we believe to come for the job. So if Nicerda, which I believe they have a good grip on what's to come, it is 10,000. I would probably say, based on the information and that, and the research that we've gathered, that at least 2,000 to 5,000, which I know is a huge gap, would be within New York City. And the pay, you know, it ranges because the planning and development, I think, is more high level, right? Those are the attorneys, the engineers, to the more operations and maintenance, which I think a lot of us working within workforce will be focusing on because those are the engineers, the plant managers, the vessel crew, the turbine technicians, those are who I think will most likely be servicing as workforce development, training providers. And those are living wages, those wages and there's opportunities for them to, to upskill and to go into other layers of installation and stuff like that. I'll, I'll try to find the Nicerda and I'll put it in the chat.
Great. And, and sorry to push back like that. You know, I think it's just, it's not. Great. And sorry to push back like that. You know, I think it's just it's not to put you on the spot so much as just our entire industry. And and if it's okay, I have one one other question. I have so many questions all the time. Both a strength and a weakness. I wanted to ask about the, so I wanted to comment, we have the East Side Coastal Resiliency Project here in the Lower East Side and East Village Bridges neighborhood. There was, it's one of the biggest federally funded projects in the state for climate mitigation and intervention with Sandy dollars behind it. And, you know, we were so excited about this project, so excited that unions were in the ballgame. We have had zero placements with these jobs. And, you know, I think I think it's really important, you know, as a premise, it's it's so, you know, organized labor is crucial to improving and impacting the lives positively for our residents in New York City. And, you know, I think I think we should hold ourselves our feet to the fire and it'd be really great to hear new, maybe describe the challenges for for engaging unions. They've locked us out of every single job that there is available. And really, the only ones we've had an opportunity to refer to are the engineers and attorneys, admins, other high education attainment professionals, and that just excludes the enormous population of Niter residents that we have in our in our district. So we, I think we need to have skepticism about the offshore wind project and and the impact it might have for New Yorkers. And probably, you know, we need the mayor and the deputy mayor, Maria Torres Springer, to really integrate the industry and make sure that the silos and barriers are broken down. So I guess that's just a comment for all of us to really try and push for some intervention here and be as loud as possible on these on these issues.
And if I can, thanks, Gaspar. It's Kathleen at new. And if I can just chime in here, I agree. I think we need skepticism is a good word for it, right? We talk, I talk a lot about, there's a lot of opportunity. And and there's a lot of challenges. And, you know, when we talk about the green economy jobs, we've talked a lot about launching this and looking how, you know, this is this moment feels different than a decade ago. But at the same time, if we are not pushing for the who, pushing for who's getting access to these careers. And, you know, Gaspar's examples are are good ones in terms of promises made, but making sure that, you know, and you know, for my in my new hat, making sure that women are well represented on these opportunities. And so I think that's that's what that's a big part of what we're all doing here is the advocacy piece.
Thanks, Kathleen. And of course, thank you, Christine. Super helpful. Again, any questions we didn't get to, put them in chat, send me an email. We'll get the questions to Christine, get answers back to everyone. In the interest of time, I'm going to pivot straight over to Diane, who's going to tell us about or introduce Brian, tell us some key updates on what's going on in training.
Thank you, Dave. Hello, everyone. Hope everyone is doing well. On behalf of the training and wraparound group, Brian Lacata from Marvel Consultants will would like to present and show everyone an update on the developments of the Kumo mapping tool. Brian?
Hey, good afternoon, everybody. So I just put inside of the chat, there is a link to the Kuma map in case you want to follow along on your own screen. And there's also a guide. I would actually suggest to open the guide first, so you can understand some of the icons and stuff you're about to see. Or you can just go through it later on. So I'm going to share my screen really fast. Okay. So over the last month or so, we have been taking all the data that we've been finding related to the green economy and plugging it into maps. And then we've been changing some of the maps just to see how they look. Right now, what you're looking at is a little bit of a simplified version, and I'll show you how to expand it. Right now, what you see is jobs first and all of our sub buckets. Advocacy, city agencies, nonprofits, higher ed, it's mediaries, state agencies, workforce programs, businesses, and high schools. As the map started to get populated, it became a little bit more confusing because there was just so many different fields that were in it. Up on the top, there is a little bit of a menu, and you can switch to see certain buckets by themselves. Let's just say that I wanted to see the business sections. Or you can say, I would like to see every single thing that's in this map in one shot. And if you use the zoom on your keyboard, starts to become a little bit of a better picture. As I said, the map started to get very, very large. We are close to about 100 different entities that are inside of this map. You can zoom in at any single time. You can touch an icon and you can use this right button to focus in, and it will show you how they're connected. And then you can uncheck that to kind of move it out. What we wanted to be able to see today was the usability of the map. So in the center of the map, we have all of these circles. The circles are the elements. They represent the businesses and the organizations. At the top and at the bottom, there are different tags that you can use to actually filter through what you see. And when you touch them, what should happen is that some of these groups slowly decide to disappear, and you're only left with one of the icons that you touched. On the left-hand side, you will get a description. I had to just say, there we go, for all of the groups that are here. Let's go back for a second. So if I decided to touch on kinetic communities consulting, I should get the description and any information that we were able to populate in the map. New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, like I said, any of the information that you see. What we wanted to kind of get from everybody today is because this is a little bit overwhelming, is how they would use this. So like I said, if you see the image on the left, you can click all programs. You can look for only nonprofits that exist. Kind of zoom in and see what they're looking at like this. You can look for workforce programs. Every single icon that's in here, you should be able to touch, get their information. On the left-hand side, these are tags. If I hover over any of the tags inside of that filtered group, I should be able to see even less of what I was seeing in the beginning. And you can click multiple things at once. There's information, email addresses, websites, as much as we were able to get from each of the different organizations. So in the emphasis of time here, I figured that it would be best just to kind of open it up and see what do people kind of think? Is it aesthetically a little bit more pleasing to look at it in this view? Than something that looks like this? Is it usable? So like if I was looking for my own organization, could I go into the search and find it by typing something in? Or could I go right to the beginning? See? And there is a big menu, and these are all clickable. So if I wanted to see any of these, I can touch them, and that group should show up. But based on kind of what we're showing you today and what you're seeing and the emphasis of time here, because I know we're already at the end, kind of wanted to get a little bit of feedback and see what everybody is looking at.
So I know we've lost a bunch of people. Thanks, Brian. Whoever's left here, if you have like a quick response you want to put in chat to give feedback to Brian, but I think we'll have to circle back to everyone for to gather information. And see, we've been talking to some folks in like a task force and that have given some feedback. If you're interested in being somebody who weighs in on this and contributes to that, the build out of it, let us know and we'll add you to the next meeting for that. So Brian can get feedback.